I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that our cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised, our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gadsden U2. This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Alvin Nelson for the role call.
Councilwoman Toles?
Here.
Councilman Williams?
Here.
Worthy?
Here.
Back?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
And Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Heath Williamson to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for your blessings. We just thank you, Father, that we can know you, that we can serve you. Father, we thank you for your Word. We thank you for your faithfulness, Lord, in just all that you are. We pray, Father, for your blessings. We ask for your wisdom and your guidance, knowledge, and discernment, that we may understand all things that are before us. May we understand your will, Father, and follow you completely. I pray that we never resist you at any time. We love you, Father. We thank you for all that you are. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Public Safety Committee Work Session and the City Council Meeting that was held June 22nd.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of accounts for the week of June 18th through the 24th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Any proclamations? Unfinished business? We have two items. The first item is a resolution assessing nuisance abatement lien against property for demolition for $2,441.40 on property at 1107 Hurst Street in District III. This is FNA NPLLC. Possible rights of redemption of the estate of Henry Adam Mall and the Pentecostal Temple, COGIC, being the last known owners. This resolution was tabled for 30 days on May 25th. What is the pleasure of the council?
At the request of the Building Department, I would like to ask for a 60-day table, please.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for 60 days, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to table for 60 days.
The next item is an ordinance authorizing conveyance of property located at 1515 Roosevelt Avenue. And this ordinance was presented last week for first reading. Carrie Leon has offered to pay $200 for the property. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
This is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of an ordinance rezoning property located at 1706 Forest Avenue in the I-1 light industry district to a B-1 neighborhood business district. Howard Gilbert requests a rezoning in order to allow for the use of an automotive service and repair shop. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to this ordinance? Is there anyone speaking favor? This ordinance was presented today for the first reading and the council will vote on it next week. Our next resolution is awarding bid number 3454 for Wild Haven Circle Drainage Improvement Project. The city engineer has recommended awarding the bid to James E. Watts and Company Contractors and Company, and the amount is $76,424,000. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next item is amending the substance abuse policy. This policy was last amended in 2018, and this amendment will bring it into compliance with the federal recommendations. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
New business? We have none. Department reports, committee boards, and at this time, okay, Ms. Wellington is coming from Parks and Recreation, and after which time, Mr., our Representative Isabel will come.
Hello, everyone. I was just coming up to give a little announcement of what's coming up in July. First of all, I do want to mention First Friday for July 2nd. Kay could not be here today, so wanted to talk about that for her. It is this Friday from 6:00 to 9:00 downtown, historic downtown Gadsden. There will be entertainment on Second and Broad, Third and Broad, Fourth and Broad, and Fifth and Broad. So we ask everybody to come out and enjoy First Friday this month for the month of July. And then after that, we do have a summer concert series at the Ample Theater at 9:00 PM. This is all my rowdy friends, and we enjoy, or we invite everybody to come out, bring your chair, bring your cooler. We do have some vendors there, and just have a good night after First Friday downtown at the Ample Theater. Independence Day fireworks will be on the 4th of July. I'll repeat, on the 4th of July. We get a lot of questions on what day we shoot fireworks. It's on the 4th of July at 9:00 PM. Fireworks are shot on the east bank of the Cousteau River. Perfect viewing is at Marina Park on this side, or at the venue, or at Cousteau Landing. We invite everybody to come out and bring their families and see the fireworks on the 4th of July. Then we wanted to announce that we are starting limited senior programs back July 6th. We're hosting a Bingo and Ice Cream Social to welcome back all of our seniors July 6th at 10:00 AM to noon at the Downtown Civic Center. Mahjong, Bridge, Exercise, El Senors, Bingo, and Quilters will start meeting also in July. If all goes well and we are able to do all the, keep up all the procedures and everything, then in August, we'll start back our Senior Friday Night Dances, our Line Dancing, Clogging, and Square Dancing. Adult coed and men's softball leagues will start second week of July. And remember, July is Parks and Recreation Month. So we invite everybody, as always, to come out and enjoy all of our parks and facilities that we have here in the City of Gadsden. And on July 16th, if everybody remembers, that is Parks and Recreation Professional Day. So we give a little thank you to all the Parks and Recreation staff and all their hard work that they do throughout the city. Thank y'all.
Jen, before you go, what about the exercise class at Walnut Park Community Center? I get asked about this every Sunday about it.
Right. We are trying to get back at the Downtown Civic Center and see how we can do there, and then we will expand our program back. We will start in July our Congress meals at Elliott and Carver. But right now with staffing and limitations, we just want to make sure we're doing a good program and following all the procedures that CDC has put out, laid out for us.
Do you have any time limit when it might be over there?
We want to get through the July and see how well we're doing then with our senior programs.
All right. Thank you.
Jen, thanks. Just, if you don't mind, please reiterate currently what the COVID-related safety protocol is in the, in our facilities, in our city facilities?
Inside our city facilities, it is a mask preferred. We are at full, full capacity at all of our rental facilities downtown and in our community centers. We, we limit some of our programs and activities, like we do have summer camp going on, but we do have some limitations just to make sure, again, that we are, we're doing our best to follow, just sanitation is keeping everything clean. We have not opened up our water fountains just because we cannot clean them as often as they need to be, but we do warn people to bring their own drinking devices and water. So that's where we're at for our inside facilities. Outdoors is, is full capacity also.
Yeah, and it's, again, I guess it's meaningful to reiterate that it's nothing political, everything's being driven by CDC guidelines.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, President Toles, and members of the council. I'm here today to basically report regarding a study I had done by Parca, which is Public Affairs Research Council Alabama is an independent group. And this was to review about the occupational tax. And I think I'll be reiterating what I said earlier on a lot of things, but what I'd ask is, to Parca, is this is a formal request for Parca to conduct a study and analysis of the City of Gadsden tax structure, in particular, the occupational tax. The purpose of this request is to conduct an independent, unbiased study to determine the importance and irrelevance of the Gadsden tax structure and how it compares with other similar-sized towns in Alabama. And basically, what we, what I derived from this study, and I've provided this to the council members, and Jason will make sure you get, get one, I'll even give you a printed one, that, you know, the Senator proposed a bill that there are five municipalities in this county that have occupational tax. And he proposed that they let the public vote on whether to do away with the occupational tax. The problem with that is they need to understand what it is and how it works and what it does for each municipality. Now, he had said that by tightening their belts and allowing for future growth, you could reduce the occupational tax over a 20-year period. The problem is, is Gadsden has been, it has gotten smaller through the decades. In 1960, there were 60,000 people. Now there are approximately 35,000 people, so our growth is not there. For the number of individuals that are employed in Gadsden, there are 26,000 people approximately that work in Gadsden. 20,000 live outside of Gadsden, either in the county or other surrounding areas. So your tax base is much smaller. And one of the big points that this study made is that if you do take this away, it's going to have to be replaced with some other tax, most likely, property tax. And I think that property tax, you talk about that to the public, they're not very nice about it when you tell them that you want to increase their property tax. They may not like the occupational taxes they work in Gadsden, but if you tell them the property tax is going to go up, they're going to be very upset. We rank 52nd out of 62 as lowest property tax in the state. Now, the thing is, is Gadsden is not only the county seat, it's a regional hub for many people that come in from all over, you know, whether to work or to have dinner. And what this does, this allows, along with some other few taxes, this allows people that use the utilities, the services of Gadsden, that they participate in paying. Now, there are only 26 municipalities throughout the state that have this. And I think Gadsden kind of stands alone because they are, again, the hub of an area. And I had spoken earlier about Opelika. Opelika does have an occupational tax, but it has Auburn, which is next door to it, and there is a great amount of growth because of Auburn University. So that's just one example. And the bottom line, the purpose is not intended to penalize residents, you know, that are outside the city, but just let them participate. Now, you have four other municipalities, Galenco, Southside, Rainbow City, and Atala, that also have occupational taxes. And I've spoken with, for the mayors, including our mayor, they were not for this particular bill. And the bottom line is, if any municipality wanted to get rid of the occupational tax, they could do so without legislation. It can be voted on by the city council, and they have that opportunity to do so. And I've spoken with every single mayor regarding that. When it was proposed, the Senator didn't offer any solutions. And something I like to do is, when there is a subject that comes up, I'm not for or against anything. What I'm here as an elected official is to go and find the details, what it would affect, because there are many people in town that think that it's a regressive tax, and it might be. However, it has been there for many decades because so many people do come into Gadsden to work. So in closing, I think that the occupational tax analysis, it will be made public to anybody that wants it. I provided to the Gadsden Times, I've provided it to the mayors throughout the county. So if anybody needs it, there will be availability to get it because I want everybody to be able to see it. So, does anyone have any questions?
Yes, Representative Isabel, let me make, let me get this clear. You did talk to the mayor of Southside, correct?
That is.
And that was against doing away with the occupational tax?
No, sir. She actually is the only mayor that was a proponent of this particular bill.
Okay, since her and the council said they was for doing away with it, all they have to do is just come up and actually say they want to do away with the tax, the 2% occupational tax in Southside. They can do that on their own.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, that's their way. I knew that they had said that on the internet that they was willing to do away with theirs, so now there's, there's an out for them. They can do away with theirs if they wanted to.
That's correct.
And any new mayor or council or anybody from, that's running for the next election or a year after that, for any cities that want to do away with, they would be able to.
That is correct.
Without a legislative action, without anybody?
That is right.
Question, when you, when you vote that out, can you at a later date vote it back in?
That I cannot answer. I'm not going to tell you. I know that.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Hold on just a second, Madam President. Representative Isabel, I know it's customary, not necessarily mandatory, but customary for the Legislative Reference Service to review legislation, prior to being presented. Was that done with the legislation relative to the occupational tax?
They actually helped, they actually helped write the bills.
So they drafted?
So they, they were the ones that actually, you know, authored the bills, and then, you know, the Senator, you know, was asking certain things to be in it, but they were the ones that did that.
Okay.
I don't have any questions, Representative Isabel, but I do want you to know that I take great pride in reprimanding you for this, but I would prefer Councilman Wilson or Neighbor.
Neighbor. Yes, Neighbor.
Representative Isabel, I want to thank you for going to the trouble to get this report. I've read it in depth. I learned a lot of things from it. I think one of the initial things is that this occupational tax kind of grew out of the states that are referred to as the rust belt, primarily up north where you have a lot of heavy industries, steel, manufacturing, tires. So Gadsden, Etowah County kind of fits in that rust belt, and that's, you see occupational taxes, I think the number was 4,964 cities have nationwide, 4,964 taxing jurisdictions across the US assess a local income tax of, of some type. And I think what's happened, according to this study, is that over time, the people that work in those factories became upwardly mobile and were able to move maybe out of the city center into the suburbs and the growth after World War II. And cities across the nation, and the rust belt saw their, their tax infrastructure leaving, and hence, they all started having this occupational tax or the local taxing structure. So, because most of those cities, just like Gadsden, we're not only a county hub, we're a regional hub for healthcare, or to hospitals, many doctors' offices, and ancillary businesses are also located in the City of Gadsden. And so it's, it's an infrastructure issue. I mean, I think it says 1960, 60% of Etowah County residents lived within the city limits. Today, only 34%, kind of to the back of what, what you were saying. And some other important parts is the outmigration creates downward property values. So we do have a property tax, but our property values over time have diminished because of, of the outward migration, according to the Parca report. So there's just so much to this report, so much data. You know, the first tax was passed in 1956 for 1%, the second one in 1962. And then some of the more, probably the last thing that I'll point out that I thought was, was critical, is that it has been suggested that we could make up for the loss of the tax revenue by increased sales tax revenue and growth in our, our city. And this no secret, I mean, I've spoken out against the Senator's bill to, to remove the occupational tax, and I still feel that way. But you have to, this article points out, or the study, rather, growth in revenue is accompanied by growth in the cost of employees, healthcare, and retirement. So you do, if you do have growth in revenue, that, along with that comes grossed in your, gross increase in your overhead. So it's not just a clear profit of, we have new sales tax revenue, there's also associated costs to go with that. So it's just, it's incorrect to think that you can just outgrow, or you can grow your, your problem by just increased revenue from your, from your sales tax, according to this report. So it's, it's very detailing, and I encourage everybody to read this report. Read it for yourself. Donna Thornton has it. She should publish this on Gadsden Times, and Gil has it available. So that's what I've done. I've just read the report, and I think it's very informative, and I appreciate you getting it done for us. Thanks.
There is one more issue that I would like to bring up, is that, and I don't think it's outlined in the report, however, from a bond rating, the City of Gadsden backs their bonds using this occupational tax. And it would be detrimental, after talking with some people that are in the bond industry, that it could be detrimental to Gadsden, and I'm sure to Rainbow City, Atala, and the other particular towns. So, and it's not, and it's just like I've said earlier, I don't like paying taxes, but I pay this. I work in Gadsden at my main job, even though I have a part-time job doing this. But it's best to look at the, the bottom line, everything, you know, instead of proposing something, look at all the issues that are involved. And, and it does have in the future, you know, with the future administrations, with future, if there is growth, you know, it may be something we can look at in the future, but at this time, it'd be a very difficult thing to do. So, but thank you.
Representative Isabel, you know, I'd like to just kind of reiterate and expound on what you just shared because I think it's important. You know, for those that may miss the fact that in order to do anything meaningful, cities of our size and smaller typically are required to go to the bond market to secure funds to do major projects and do any kind of major, major events from, from an investment perspective. The alternative to going to the bond market is, of course, raising taxes. And as you mentioned earlier, very many people aren't open to that. There's not much of an appetite for, for additional taxes, and that's understandable. And so it is important for us to be very protective of our bond rating. It's very, it's important for us to be good financial stewards over our bond rating and, and display the appropriate level of fiduciary responsibility as we manage our ratings. So that means not going to the market unless it's absolutely necessary. That means managing the perception of your municipality. And, and that means not, not engaging in risky activities and, and spreading the prospect of risky activities and events. So, so again, I think that, that aligns itself, and I'm so glad you brought that up because that is very important. And typically, when a current, an incumbent elected official is talking about it, we're not talking about it from the perspective of us being here now and anything that's going to happen right now, because there are no plans for us to go to the market at this point. What we're generally looking at is the future, and none of us are guaranteed to be a part of that. But we also, but we do, being responsible, want to make sure that, that the pieces are in place to, to protect the city and its need to potentially raise funds in the future. So, so again, thank you. I'll just reiterate what was said earlier. Thank you so much for taking the time and having the foresight to do what you've done.
Well, I appreciate it. I appreciate my time in front of the council today. And if I can, of course, everyone has my telephone number, if I can help in any way, and even for the public, it's very easy to find. Just go online, it's my cellphone, and I answer every single call. So thank you very much.
Thank you. We have remarks. We'll start with Councilman Worthy.
Yes, I just want to make an announcement. We're having a District III community meeting slash town hall meeting tonight at 6:00 PM at Carver Community Center to talk about crime, crime prevention, and community relations. So please come, come with a problem, but also come with the solution, working toward the solution. So Sheriff will be there, the Chief Police will be there, the Marcus Reed from the DA's office will be there, and several of the, the Commissioner from District Five will be there. So please come on out, and please wear a mask because the coronavirus is not over with, and we will social distance. Thank you.
Councilman Cannon?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to speak a little bit about Officer 65, that was Allen Hunter. He passed away this last Friday or Saturday. He was a good guy. He stayed with our police force a long time. I guess probably everybody here knew him when he wasn't on the police force working. He'd be working a part-time job at Burger King a lot, and he got to know all the kids and everybody that comes strolling through there. And he's been living in Alabama City as long as I can remember, and I just want to say thoughts and prayers go out to the family. That's all I have.
Councilman Reed?
Very good. Let me correct a misprint in the paper about the fireworks. They said 8:00 to 10:00, but actually, as Jen said, it's going to be at 9:00. It's going to be sponsored by the Gadsden Etowah Patriots Association, and we welcome everybody, 9:00 July the 4th, Sunday. Thank you.
All right. Councilman Williams?
I don't have anything, Madam President.
Councilman Back?
I don't have anything, Madam President.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes, ma'am. I just, to, to leave some thoughts on the whole occupational tax, everybody knows that I was not in favor of Senator Jones' bill, but it was primarily because of what I've said all along. I think the government is going to get their money from you, no matter what, and eliminating the occupational tax is just going to result in the raising of taxes somewhere else. And one example of that here in Gadsden is, I think, the, the property tax in Gadsden represents 8% of this city's budget. There are communities directly around us, after a quick review of these numbers, where it reprimands, represents as much as 30% of their budget. So you go to places all across this country, they may not have an occupational tax, but you pay three times as much when you buy a car. You may not have an occupational tax, but your water and sewer rates are higher than, than they are in neighboring communities. Your trash pickup, your trash, trash collection rates, there's so many ways the government gets in your pocket that it doesn't matter. All this actually does, and this gets into the weed of, weeds of politics, is it moves who controls the money. It doesn't make taxpayers pay less, it just changes who gets to spend the money that they're taking from the taxpayers. And in my mind, and of course, I'm biased because I'm a local elected official, but I think that money should stay as close to the people who paid it in. And so for that reason, I'm not in favor of any knee-jerk reaction to shift massive amounts of money. I mean, you're talking about over $200 million over the course of 20 years that would be taken out of the Gadsden coffers. And again, as much as I don't like the tax, any more than anybody else does, you see the problems that, that our engineering department have to deal with every day, and water and sewer, especially when we're having 100-year rains every month instead of every 100 years. You know, we've got all of these issues that we're trying to overcome, and people are working really hard to overcome them, to think that now would be the time to make such a massive... such a massive withdrawal from the resources that this community has to work with, especially as we talk on top of that about employment in our police departments and fire departments, and the challenges that we have covering the cost of benefits for city employees. There's just no actionable plan here for simply doing away with the occupational tax. Now, having said that, if there's anybody that can come forward with a tangible plan that is based in sound economics, that can put us on a path to eliminate this occupational tax, I'll be the first one to sign up for the newsletter. I want to get all your emails, I want to join your Facebook group, I'll show up to every meeting, and I promise you, I'll work as hard as I can to help you get it done. But up until now, it just doesn't show itself to be a practical solution. So that's, that's all I have. I just wanted to kind of make that clear. Thank you, Madam President.
Due to the 4th of July holiday, next week's garbage collection schedule will change. Monday's route will be collected on Tuesday, Tuesday's route will be collected on Wednesday, and there's no change for Thursday and Friday's route. I call for a motion to-
Madam President, real quick, I have one more thing.
Okay.
It's a holiday weekend coming up, please, please, please don't drink and drive, and please be safe. Thank you.
All right. Okay, I call for a motion to adjourn.